So, let's go ahead and start the September 25th Planning Commission meeting. So, our number one agenda item is agenda changes and we may, actually, how do we want to do this? For fitting in Joe because we forgot to put you on the agenda, so, um, let's do this. Does anyone have any agenda changes? Okay, so, how about under number two, public comments for non-agenda items? And this is bringing up, you were here two weeks ago and we wanted to see some more information before agreeing to sponsor the Water Matters, your next Water Matters event. So, and we all have that information now, which is great.
And what's on the table is not really, uh, this is more background information about the Ahead of the Storm program that Lewis Creek Association runs. So, helpful. You want to just remind everybody of the date of the Water Matters and then basic agenda for that?
Thank you. Thank you for re-inviting me to clarify something that was totally unclear the last time. I, uh, this is the September 6th Water Matters event that we are sponsoring, that we're hoping that you will sponsor. It is on November the 7th here at Town Hall, starting at 7:00 in the evening. There will be, excuse me, I'm, anyway, uh, what we're, in trying to encourage is a individual actions for the greater good. That's kind of the subtitle of what we're driving at. And that it is to give Jessica Louisis, is that correctly pronounced?
Luisos.
Luisos, thank you, um, is, is going to do a PowerPoint presentation which will use information that gives the audience simple, um, to complex procedures for, and practices that landowners, large and small, can implement on their own properties to help address stormwater and using the principles of the three S's. Slow it, spread it, and sink it. So, um, what, also, V-Cam has pro, has offered or not offered way vast and they have agreed to film this thing so that it can spread wider than a, a finite audience, which I think would be, will be really great. So, uh, what you have, yes, is background for Ahead of the Storm and, uh, what, what you're going to hear is a very fine presentation from Jessica. Marty Illick, Kelly, Kate Kelly are working with us on this, on the rest of this program. So, there will be more, um, information coming out as we get more solidified in how this is going to work. But we're actually thinking of having some hands-on kind of thing, something called, I think it's called a water table, I think I mentioned it the last time. It's when people, it's so that people, it's sand and water that people can maneuver to see how water will flow when certain things happen to the sand.
Did you borrow that from?
Yes, we're going to try to borrow it, I, and that's some of the things.
We, yeah, we borrowed that once for a Fall Festival demonstration, yeah, several years ago, so that's, that's a great idea.
And we're also going to extend the, which we always do, extend this invitation to the surrounding towns so that Shelburne and Charlotte and, and Moncton and Starksborough, all of, you know, St. George, people can be welcomed there to, to take part in this. So, that is what, that is a little clearer about what, what this is supposed to be. And we're asking, so, anyway, thank you.
Is it going to be upstairs?
Pardon?
Is it going to be upstairs and down?
Oh, yeah. And the, we've actually got the space from earlier than 7:00, so we'll have plenty of time to set things up. Probably 5:00 before, so, it'll be no driver's ed. So, thank you for looking at this again. I know you have a busy meeting.
Okay. So, are we, um, we're looking for a motion? To sponsor?
Motion's up, yeah.
Or just general, general agreement? So, any discussion on, we had a fairly good discussion two weeks ago.
I was here last time and I was looking at the minutes, and are we looking to sponsor the event?
Co-sponsor, yes. Lewis Creek Association, Responsible Growth Heinsberg, and I don't know if there are any others, I think those are the two principles.
The two majors.
Yep.
And then I was looking to see what it meant to be, you know, what does that mean to be a sponsor? Just to say that we.
What's the specific ask, Joanna? You're, you're not looking for money or anything, right?
We're not looking for money, we're not looking for cookies, we're looking for, probably, for more input from, from the Planning Commission, perhaps? If there are things that, that you could contribute, that would be wonderful, but, you know, other than that, it's, it's, it's more of, um, having Alex available, um, having the support or agreeing perhaps, uh, that this is an important thing. It is, what we're endeavoring to do is to save the taxpayer money that would, that could be affected when people don't pay attention to their own piece of land, when they don't recognize that what's flowing down their driveway is flowing onto 116 or, or any other street, which then the town will have to clean up and, stormwater-wise, and, and, uh, mitigating the stormwater that goes into the La Platte, et cetera.
Well, I think we've sponsored at least one of these before.
Yes, you have.
Was it the most recent one?
I think it was.
I think it was last year that the Planning Commission thought it was relevant and sponsored, but it was the same sort of thing. It wasn't a sponsorship in the form of a donation, it was more just lending the Planning Commission's name to the event so people could see it was something that a town committee was interested in as well as these nonprofit groups.
Joe, is there, uh, are you going to have an agenda or something prepared at some point?
Yes, there will be.
You might share that in terms of getting us involved in our ideas. You might share that with us, we've got some time between now and the beginning of November to, to interact with you. If you could, you know, send us a draft agenda or any material.
The next will probably happen on October 4th when we have our next subcommittee meeting, our committee meeting.
I think that would be helpful to keep us up to speed.
Fine, yes, absolutely happy to share that.
Well, I make a motion to, for the Planning Commission to sponsor Water Matters Number Six.
I'll second that.
Right. Additional discussion? No? No? Anyone else? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay.
Thanks, Joanna.
Thank you for showing up.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, so, let's, um, let's move on to the Growth Management Scoring System for Water, Wastewater Allocation.
So, the tag team on this, I sent out two documents that came from the allocation committee that Dan served on and that I helped staff. One document was a memo to the Select Board with the committee's recommendations for moving to a more progressive water and wastewater allocation system, and the other was a scoring system, a proposed scoring system that could be dropped into the zoning regulations for the DRB to administer. So, uh, the short version of this, for the viewing audience, more than anybody else, since presumably you've all taken a peek at this, the short version is that right now our, our water and wastewater allocation is, is doled out on a first-come, first-served basis with limited, um, selectivity based on geography. So, the, there are three categories in the current allocation groupings. Category one is sort of special projects reserved for the Select Board at their discretion to give out, things like municipal projects, school projects, affordable housing projects, senior housing projects. Category two is a set amount of allocation that's available for the village core area. And category three is a set amount of remaining allocation for everybody else in the sewer service area. And that's aside from sometimes tinkering with the amount of residential versus commercial, industrial, or what we call enterprise allocation, that's the level of complexity that our current allocation system is. You have those categories, you can make your request, and it's just given out on a first-come, first-served basis. What the Select Board asked this, this temporary committee to look at is whether there was a, a better way to do that and whether there was a way, in the words of Andrea Morganti, who, who really helped spearhead this at the Select Board level when she was still on the board, to value that very limited resource more and, and have the way we give out allocation better implement the goals in our town plan. And I think the town plan actually has action items that call on us to think about that, so it's, it's consistent that, that we would do that. So, the committee that Dan was a part of spent a good deal of time gathering some information about how other communities dole out allocation. Turns out they all do it on a first-come, first-served basis, some of them without any sort of differentiation in categories geographically the way we do. And we also gathered information about rates and capacities and whether these other communities had limitations or not. And because most communities, almost all that we looked at in Vermont, give things out on a first-come, first-served basis, we focused, the committee focused a lot of its attention on the Town of Williston's model. They are the only community in the state that has a formal growth management system that is there to both limit the amount of development that can happen over a period of time and give out a fixed amount of allocation or growth management slots, but it's also a system that, that prioritizes who gets that allocation based on a scoring system. And so, what the allocation committee recommended is a version of that system. It's a Heinsberg-based version, we did not take the Williston scoring system lock, stock, and barrel. It was, it was crafted based on input from this, this committee, but the, uh, the basic structure is similar. And in that structure, each year, the Select Board, just like they do now, would place a certain amount of allocation in various pots, but what would change is that the, uh, the biggest of those pots would be essentially given to the DRB and they would be making allocation decisions based on this scoring framework once a year. This is the way Williston does it as well, at least in their growth management system. So, uh, so that's a big change, and if that were to come to pass, we would need changes in the water and wastewater ordinance that the Select Board adopts, new structure in terms of how it's doled out, and, uh, we would need changes in the zoning regulations to implement the scoring system. So, that's why this is in front of you. The Select Board will be working on the ordinance piece of it at a later date, and your job is to look at what the committee, allocation committee recommended and see about whether you want to propose a zoning change to help implement it. So, that's the short story, the devil, of course, is in the details.
Dan, do you want to say anything, just to prime them for, you know, your thoughts or the work of the committee?
Yeah, sure. So, when we went through this process, I mean, I'd just like to say, you know, the committee, we, a lot of us did a lot of research and looked at a lot of different towns and cities to come up with what we felt like would be a good system for Heinsberg. So, you know, as Alex mentioned, we didn't just take what Williston did and, you know, applied it to Heinsberg. You know, it's really based on what we felt was going to be good for the town, but there were a lot of good discussions along the way, you know, similar to what, you know, we, we do here every meeting, and I'm just really excited to have all of you look through it and get your feedback as well.
Alex, are we still, are we still going to have these three different categories that you described? And, and the, these new standards for allocating apply to all three of them?
No, I don't think so. I think, um, I think that we will likely still have a category similar to category one, which is some amount of allocation that's at the Select Board's discretion for those oddball, really important projects that might not fit into the overall scheme. But I, I don't see us necessarily having the same structure for this category two and category three system. We could, and there's definitely something to be said about ensuring that there's always a certain amount of allocation available for the village core so that it doesn't get, you know, soaked, soaked into outlying areas, but there was a lot of discussion, as Dan can tell you, in the scoring system about how to prioritize projects that are closer to the, to the center of the village. And I think the committee's thought was that that's baked into the scoring system, so we may not need, you know, two categories, one for the village core, one for everything else. But that's not to say that we couldn't talk more about that and maybe, you know, put that, put that in. But, yeah, I think we want to keep it fairly simple, giving the Select Board, you know, a special pot and then most everything else in this, this allocation system, the, uh, scoring system. The, the one exception to that that you'll see in the recommendation memo is that the, the committee felt that Williston's model of having a, um, an exemption or a shortcut for small projects is important, and so, I can see that being a separate chunk of allocation that would, that would live outside of the scoring system and outside of the special projects category that the Select Board has at its discretion. That could be its own special pot that says, if you meet these tests, you're, you're not going through the scoring system, you're not waiting, you know, for the annual divvying up of this, you can go, you can, you have this pot to go to immediately.
You mean like an intel project?
Yeah, and, and what the committee recommended was, uh, subdivisions of three or fewer lots, which we classify as a minor subdivision in our regs, or, um, uh, projects that would be 1,000 gallons per day or less of allocation, which currently, the way our system is set up is that for, for allocation of 1,000 gallons per day or less, the Select Board doesn't see it, and the Director of Buildings and Utili, uh, Buildings and Facilities is empowered to give out allocation at that level. So, their recommendation was, you know, sort of based on that. I think that the Select Board will need to talk about that framework and decide how much, you know, they're willing to put into such a category and how exactly that would work. But, yeah, it will look different from our current system, for sure.
And the special category the Select Board would have would be like for the municipal projects?
Yep.
This building, this school.
And projects like, um, an affordable housing project that, that they feel deserves special consideration. So, in the scoring system, affordable housing projects are, there's a priority baked in for them, and so they should be able to hopefully score well and get the allocation they need. There are times, though, when the Select Board may want to favor a particular project, perhaps a project that we are partnering with on, so like the Green Street project, we actually went out and got a Community Development Block Grant for. That didn't mean the town became the developer, but it sort of meant the town had a stake in that project coming to fruition, and in that case, the Select Board might want to have some leeway to say, we don't care how you score, this project needs to move forward because we're, we're in on it. Similarly with the senior housing project. But, we still, the Select Board will still need to have those conversations, and, and if they're very comfortable with the scoring system, they may, they may decide, no, we don't need special allocation for those projects, it's baked into the system, we'll just use the special allocation from what you said, municipal, school, that sort of thing. So, it's, a little bit remains to be seen.
I think this sounds like a great thing to have, to prioritize projects. I guess one thing I noticed was, you know, this was written separately from our open space requirements. So, you know, it, I would, it doesn't seem to, if, if people say our open space requirements are going to be passed, I mean, they're not adopted yet, people shouldn't get points for something that they're required to do, should they? I mean, maybe the wording should be adjusted to say, you know, you'd get so many points if you provide this facility above and beyond the, the open space requirements.
And that, that's a good point. The committee had quite a few conversations about the above and beyond, and I think, if, if I'm remembering right, Dan, the general consensus was, uh, committee wanted these points to accrue for projects that were above and beyond, not, not just meeting a, a requirement of the state or of us. So, so that, I think that's a very good point and one that, as the Planning Commission, who created those open space regs, you should look at that and see if they, if they match up or if we're, or if there's duplication in there. There was, because we were doing it at the same time and because Dan and I were there, I think we tried to, you know, keep them a bit separate, but there could be overlap, and so we can tweak that.
I mean, there is language there that says above and beyond.
Right, so.
In what they've shown.
In one of the particular scoring categories?
Yeah, I mean, the scoring category that's public infrastructure.
I remember we had this discussion around, I think it was, uh, energy efficiency or, because, you know, as of now, the state requirements for energy efficiency are pretty high, and we had talked about, you know, there are different levels of that. I forget who it was that came to talk, but, you know, you can do like what the state requires, and then there's different, what is it, certifications that go above and beyond what the requirement is, and with the scoring system, for example, you would get points for taking that extra step in your project.
As a stormwater, as a stormwater, you get zero points for, for meeting the town's regs, right, which are above the state's regs. So, you know, consistent, and then, energy efficiency, zero points, projects that simply meet minimum state efficiency standards.
So, are we commenting on, like, smaller details at this time?
Yeah, this is your introduction, so, you know, you, some of you may be still confused about the, how the system would work, so Dan and I are happy to talk about the logistics of how it would work, which I think are important. And then there's the fun stuff, which is the, the meat of the scoring system, and we can talk about, you know, why the categories, I think there are six, why, why those were selected, and, and then within each, you know, why they're, they're scored the way they are and how that's supposed to work. So, yeah, I think whatever questions you have, you know, on the nitpicky stuff or on the broader, just shoot them out there, we can try to answer.
A question that I have is, and I know we had talked about this a lot during the meeting, was how much allocation we actually, that we have left?
That's a good foundational question.
And I know we had talked about that quite a bit, and it's been a little while since we, you know, proposed this. Has that changed at all, or, I mean, maybe that could be a good starting point, is to give everyone an update on where we stand with that?
I think that's a good, I think that's a good idea. So, and it's important, um, also from the standpoint of one of the committee members, this was a, uh, this was a pretty diverse committee, as you could see in the memo. There were several interested citizens, and then there was representation from the Planning Commission, the Development Review Board, the Select Board, the Affordable Housing Committee, and the Economic Development Committee. Right, and, um, so, and a broad group of people, Peter Urb, who was our former zoning administrator, commented at the end, you know, he felt like it was a really good committee. Not only did it work well together, but they argued, you know, there were differing viewpoints at times. Anyways, Andrew Frost from the Economic Development Commission, at the end of this whole thing, said, I support this, but if we don't bring the new well online and we have, you know, this much allocation to give out, this is a complicated enough and robust enough system that it's not worth doing. You know, it only makes sense to do this if we in fact have a decent amount of capacity. So, that was his opinion, not the committee's, but I, I respect that, and, and I think that makes Dan's suggestion a good one. Let me scroll down where we summarize where we're at. So, this is the page that talks about the current system capacity. It is the water system's capacity limitations that we're, that we're stuck on right now. The wastewater treatment system has substantial capacity remaining, even though we, we are planning a huge upgrade for that system to deal with the phosphorus, uh, new phosphorus standards, but per our permit, there's a lot of capacity there. Our water system is, basically doesn't have any capacity left. So, this, this table or, or section of the report or memo talks about what's left, and, um, here, I'll get the pointer out here, I guess I'll use this so the viewing audience can see it. At the bottom here, our allocable capacity, at the time this memo was written, was about 3,000 gallons per day. Since this was written, the Select Board redid the, the allocation numbers, they, they do that once a year, and so that has changed. Actually, I think I can bring up what the current numbers are, hold on just a moment. It's still very little, there's not much capacity to give out. We really do need the new well that we are working on to come online to provide that capacity. Okay, so, here's the official version, a little bigger. So, it's, it's actually looking better, based on this newer calculation. So, as of right now, we have 11,000-plus gallons to allocate. However, that number is still a small number based on the development proposals that we have in front of us, and, um, yeah.
As, could you give a reference, like, one single-family home would use?
Yes, one single-family home would use 210 gallons per day.
For a three-bedroom home?
Yes. It's slightly less for a two-bedroom, so if we do the calculator thing, because I'm not good at doing it in my head on the fly, 56 homes out of that capacity, and I take that back, I'm sorry, that's, that is the wastewater capacity. The state has a very odd, odd, um, allocation rule, it's actually much less than that. For wastewater, a three-bedroom home is 210 gallons per day. For water, the state says 420 gallons per day.
For a three-bedroom?
For a three-bedroom home. I've argued with them when they redid the state rules about why there's such a discrepancy, because there shouldn't be, but they, that's just where they are. So, I'm sorry, 28 new homes is what that would come out to, given that 420 gallons per day per three-bedroom, single-family home.
Now, what about, there's, there's a list on page four of, of the memorandum that has the assigned unused allocations as of?
Right.
Four or five. My understanding was that Blumstrom, NRG Industrial and Commercial, has backed off and they're not proposing to do their project.
So, they've withdrawn their site plan application, but their water and wastewater allocation is still active and still exists. Those allocations are good for three years.
Yeah.
So, my guess is that, um, if they, if they choose not to pursue the project at all, but they'll either give that back or allow it to expire.
Does that change numbers significantly in this table?
So, that's a good question. We can actually run those numbers because we have them at the, in the memo here. So, the Blumstrom project is here on that table in the, in the memo, and, and the water allocation that they've been assigned is 3,100 gallons, so that's how much would come back. So that's how much would come back if that project were to, uh, return its allocation.
The one at the top of the list, it's also a Blomstrom project, not.
That would likely come back as well, actually.
So there's 1300 up there.
Yeah, it would actually be 4,000, essentially 4,500 gallons per day would come back. So when you're looking at, um, this number of what we actually have left as of July 1st of 11,800, yes, it could be another 4,500 on top of that. Yep. Um, as you all know, these, these development projects, um, are sizable. And, um, since, since this was done, uh, we have another one on Mechanicsville Road. The Donovan O'Donnell property, which is the former Quinn property, the, the west side of Mechanicsville Road. Uh, and we expect them to come for a good chunk of this allocation, nine, nine to 10 units worth. Um, so the, the message I think is still the same as when the allocation committee sent their, their recommendations to the select board. The numbers have changed and actually gone up, which is, which is a nice thing, but the message is the same. We don't have enough allocation. Um, and it's, it's, there's still a question in my mind per Andrew's comments that, you know, do we do this very robust allocation system with so little water? Now, that, if, if I were you, I'd be asking the question, what's the status of the new well? So the status is, is that at the last select board meeting, um, after a lot of back and forth, uh, Haystack Crossing LLC, the Bissinets, uh, formally gave the town the well. So the town, uh, I don't know if it's been recorded and therefore it's effective now or in the next week or so. The town owns or will own the, the well that's been drilled. And, um, and, and the various easements that will need to connect that well to the treatment system. The next step is to drill the well deeper. Uh, based on camera work that was done, it looks like, uh, the yield will likely go up if we drill the well deeper. And there's an agreement between, uh, Blackrock, the developer, the potential developer, the Haystack Crossing, uh, property and the town to do that and to fund that. So I'm hopeful that by the end of the calendar year, that will have been done and we will know where the,
How much water?
Yeah, whether this well is actually, uh, enough to, to want to bring it online or whether we need to sort of keep it and then go find another one to add to it. That is the basic question that we're trying to answer right now.
So you're thinking end of this year?
It was supposed to be this summer. I thought we were going to know in June and then July and then by the end of summer. But, um, this, this, uh, arrangement to, uh, sort of give it to the town first wanted to happen. And so that's, that's finally happened. So the, the upshot is, there's not a lot of capacity. If this well proves out, um, and, and the, and the town agrees to bring it online, there'll be lots more capacity making this system, you know, more important.
Aren't we in a wastewater quandary shoot?
Um, yes and no. According to, well, here, let me bring up the memo from the, um, allocation committee. When they submitted it to the select board, they detailed what the water system capacity was as well as the wastewater system capacity. And, um, at that time, the wastewater system capacity was nearly 40,000 gallons per day. Um, that varies from year to year based on how much rain we get because we have an open lagoon based system and because we have a fair amount of infiltration that happens getting into our sewer pipes from rainwater. Um, so it sort of goes up and down. But the crux of that is there's, there's a lot more wastewater capacity than water capacity. And you, you can't have one without the other for the most part. So, um, we're in decent shape with that. We, we don't have enough to cover all of the development that's been proposed, but we're far closer on that side than we are on the water side.
But not meeting the newer standards of the state that requires treatment for phosphorus.
We're not meeting those standards today. Um, so even if we didn't add a single new business or new home or increase in, in allocation to our system, um, we are still on the hook to make those improvements in order to meet the new phosphorus and nitrogen, um, treatment requirements.
So no project can move ahead until that happens?
Actually, no. And that's the interesting thing about the permit that we received from the state. So, um, all towns that have municipal wastewater systems have to get a state permit, just like a homeowner has to get a state wastewater permit. Ours is a little more complicated as you can imagine, um, but it's, it's a permit. And, um, we did get the, we did get that permit from the state, I think, two years ago now or a year and a half ago. And what that permit said is, you're, you're permitted for the next five years. You can continue to add people to the system. You have, your, your permitted amount is 250,000 gallons per day and you're below that. Um, but you have to be showing us demonstrated progress towards upgrading the system to meet the new phosphorus and nitrogen, uh, treatment standards. And we have to have those implemented within that five year period.
Are we doing that?
We are, yes. So the first, uh, test was February of this year. We had to have a preliminary plan, um, for, uh, an upgrade and we submitted that. We submitted a, a much more detailed plan, um, about a month ago to the state. And the select board has been talking about this recently, just in the last month or so. The full select board has been talking about the preferred option and the price tag, which is substantial. So at this point, we are, uh, hoping to go to a bond vote and, at town meeting, uh, for that, for, for that project.
For that upgrade?
Yep. Yep.
And again, all of this applies to our wastewater and our water supply system, which is essentially in the village.
Yeah, the service area extends beyond the village up the Richmond Road, uh, including Iroquois Manufacturing. And actually the water, the current water service goes beyond that to serve the three mobile home parks. But the service area sort of ends at Iroquois and then comes down and includes the greater village area, CVU, you know, down to Buck Hill Road. Yep.
So the DRB needs, uh, uh, well, the DRB once a year is going to look at the, all the projects that have, you know, reached that, you know, um,
Yes, anyone who submitted a, a reasonable application by a certain drop dead date will be reviewed during that once a year meeting.
So is there any concern that this is going to delay projects because earlier applications have to wait until that allocation?
Yes, I, I think that, that came up in the committee's conversation and then, and it, there was acknowledgement that some projects will, may have to wait a bit longer because of this, depending on when they come in. Um, my, my, the solace I was trying to give the committee is that, uh, A, it takes projects a while to move and, and move, uh, between steps to begin with. But B, um, just like in Williston, developers understand how these things work and are going to make their applications at a time that makes sense for them based on our deadlines and, and when we make these decisions. So I, I think we will, we will see, we will see the, the pace of applications, you know, adjust to meet that time horizon.
And you're probably, you're, you're probably gonna get applications that all come in at once because nobody's going to want to show their hand first in a scoring system. It's just human nature.
Yes, I, I think that's probably true.
The, the, the other, the other way the developer would approach it, maybe someone has thought of this is, is, you know, multiple bites of the apple and trying to fall under the, the, the small project, um, exemption. Um, so I, you know, I, there, there probably needs to be some thought put into that about successive, uh, applications. Um, that, that fall into that exemption. One question I had is, can someone explain to me this new development cost chart? And why Heinsberg is 2X? I mean, is this in anticipation of wastewater, um, upgrades or?
Uh, yes. So the committee was charged with looking at rates and understanding where we fell. Uh, and we actually had Lenore from the planning and zoning office do most of that work because you'd think it would be simple, but there, it's not. There's no apple to apple comparison between towns. Everybody, uh, structures their rates differently in terms of volume versus, um, gallons per day. And anyways, it's, it's very complicated. So she took a sampling of communities that are, um, in our area or, and/or are similar to Heinsberg. And that's what this table shows. And what you're, what you're seeing, let's see, this is the user cost. So I'm showing you the user cost right now. From a user cost perspective, we are an expensive town for people just to pay their, their, uh, quarterly water and sewer rates. We're not at the top, but we're near the top. And this, this is not unusual. We are a small system with, uh, uh, not a lot of users and fixed costs that have to be spread over a small number of users. And, and you, you can see that, um, some of the larger communities are able to spread costs over more users and have a much lower, uh, rate. But what Joe's keying in on is this new development cost, which is not what a user pays, but what a developer, uh, would pay, uh, in order to gain the application to do a project. And we are leaps and bounds above everyone else in that regard. And yes, the reason is that a couple of years ago, when the select board revised our allocation, application and connection fees, um, they were anticipating these changes and they wanted to build a fund. They wanted to have those users building that fund.
Probably a smart idea?
Yeah, I, I think the committee was pretty shocked by those numbers. And I know Carl from the affordable housing committee has some real concerns about whether this is, um, shooting ourselves in the foot in terms of affordable housing. Uh, you know, if, if each new unit is, you know, nearly $20,000 in allocation fees, you know, double what another, it would be in another community, uh, is that driving the cost of housing up, uh, in ways that are problematic? Yeah, and, and we've, we've heard that from, um, one of our developers in town, uh, that, that, that was his exact comment. It says, I've got to pass these costs on to, you know, the buyer. You guys want affordable housing, this is not the way to do it. But I think, I, so I think the select board will be looking at this to some degree, uh, not to some degree. They'll be looking at it very intensively as a part of this wastewater upgrade proposal they're going to bring to the voters. Because the voters are going to want to know, and the select board also wants to know, what fee structure we're going to need to charge to, to help offset these costs so that it doesn't all just come onto, uh, you know, a double digit increase in user fees. Uh, so I think there's some evidence here that would support us perhaps recalibrating this, lowering this a bit. Um, but the sticker shock from this wastewater upgrade is going to be so great that we may not be able to. We may need new development to, to help us, you know, pay for this, this upgrade.
Well, I, I had some other questions, maybe about more of the nitty gritty detailed stuff. Like, who, who actually is, is going to, what staff or committee person is going to actually sort of manage? Once the system is approved for a project, once, once they're approved, once the project is approved, how are we going to confirm, uh, that they're doing what they said they were going to do?
Right, the things that they promised in order to get the high score.
And, and you know, how they got their high score? How do we make sure that that happens? Uh, and then the other thing, uh, do I understand that these points that you can get are, uh, the maximum? There still may be less points given for any one of these items than what's shown on the scoring list? That makes sense?
Yes, so to answer your second question first, we had a lot of conversation about this. The scoring system, um, is a little complicated in that regard. Some scoring items, as is explained, I think at the top of this whole scoring system, some scoring items are just black and white. You do this, you get this many points and, and it's, it's discreet. Um, others are more subjective and, and the, the points that are shown and the types of improvements are shown are examples. And it'll be at the DRB's discretion to, to score it based on what's written, but based on their decision.
So if we've got a, uh, item that has eight points available? They can't go over that, but they can assign less if they feel not as much as being done to get eight points.
And the Williston model provides a whole lot of discretion to their development review board. So many of their categories simply have a range of points, zero to 10. And they don't really tell you how, you know, how that gets scored. It's just at the discretion of the, of the DRB. I, I think, uh, Dan's committee wanted to be a little bit more, uh, verbose, uh, in, in giving examples so that the DRB would have, um, a frame of reference to, to make those subjective determinations. Uh, and so that applicants could have some idea of what they really should be doing in order to get the most points possible. Uh, but there definitely are several subjective categories where it's a range and it's going to be up to the board. I think we envisioned, um, applicants, uh, making their proposal and then being able to suggest what they think is an appropriate scoring, as well as the planning and zoning staff making a recommendation, that's what happens in Williston. And then the board being the ultimate arbiter of how many points each project gets. So there'll, you know, be an opportunity for everyone to make their case.
Once a year, the select board makes an overall allocation?
Correct.
Once a year, the DRB assigns total points to each project that's
Correct.
Just once a year, not when a project is before them, but at the beginning, you know, at say January 1st, everybody gets their number of points. And they might not be before the DRB until June.
No, so this, this, this process requires that the, the first conceptual level, uh, review, um, in these stepwise review processes has happened already. So, uh, for a subdivision is the easiest example. Uh, the sketch plan review stage of that, of the process has to have happened. And that it's only projects that have been through that sketch plan review, um, that are eligible to get allocation in that year's cycle. So there will be some level of review that happens at the DRB level first before the, the projects are scored and, and dole, allocation is doled out.
I, I keep thinking then that that means the, the final allocations happen over, spread out according to when the, when the project gets its sketch plan approval, let's call it that. Uh, and, and gets their allocation then or shortly thereafter?
Yeah, so the simplest way to think of it, and this isn't simple stuff. It's, I'm still puzzling out exactly how the, the ordinance ought to be written versus the zoning regs. But, um, the simple way to think of it is, uh, right now, our current system, forget about this system. Our current system says, uh, you need to have, uh, again, let's use the subdivision example. You need to have sketch plan approval from the DRB before you can ask for allocation from the select board. And you can't proceed to the next step of the DRB review, which is preliminary review or final review, until you have that allocation from the select board. So DRB comes first, first step of DRB, then select board to give allocation, then back to the DRB to finish the review, knowing that you, you have allocation that make this, makes this project real. In this new system, it would be similar in that, um, you go to the DRB first and propose a project. Then you wait for that once a year scoring opportunity. And you find out whether that project that the DRB said was good will get, it's the allocation it needs to proceed with, with the rest of the DRB review. So it basically puts the DRB in the position the select board is in right now and adds this scoring system to help guide who gets an allocation and who doesn't. And those allocations are good for three years under the current system. Um, I'm guessing it'll be similar, uh, in the new system. So those projects, um, propose, you know, have a conceptual level proposal, wait to see if they get their, their allocation and then go through the rest of the permitting process with enough time in the allocation, uh, horizon to then begin construction and, and move the project, you know, into that, that last phase at a later date.
And, and somehow the, the planning commission and eventually the town needs to have regulations in the zoning bylaws that describe this?
The scoring system, yes. My understanding is that Williston tried to do a lot of this and, and not in a very sophisticated way in their wastewater allocation ordinances back in the day, in the eighties. Um, and they were taken to court and the court said, um, yeah, you can't, you can't pick and choose through your allocation system. Um, and they were taken to court and the court said, um, yeah, you can't, you can't pick and choose through your allocation system. Um, if you're going to do this, you need to do it through your zoning. That's, that's, that's where the legislature has enabled you to, um, to make these sort of, uh, development priority decisions. And so trying to avoid legal challenges, we're trying, trying to sort of follow the Williston model and, and have the zoning be the, be the place where the scoring lives. Um, also the committee felt that, that the DRB was the logical entity to make these decisions, that the select board, um, is outside of the development review process and, and allocation is very much tied to that. So it didn't really make sense to have this back and forth. It made sense to keep it all within that, uh, board's purview. And the bible that that board uses is the zoning regulations. So makes sense to have them, you know, have this system be embedded in it.
So the scoring system would be in the zoning regulations as now thought.
Right. There would be some additional language beyond the scoring system that would refer to the ordinance. Um, but as we envisioned it, the bulk of what would be added to the zoning regulations would be the scoring system. Those would be the instructions to the DRB on how to evaluate projects and determine who gets allocation. Now, I'll tell you that in the Williston model, um, what the, what their DRB does is they grant growth management allocations, how many units you can develop, um, and over what period of time. They're not actually granting allocation, they're granting that growth management sort of number of units. And the way their zoning and their ordinance is set up, um, they can only get allocation for those growth management units. It's a little bit of semantics in my mind, but it is slightly different. The select board still is in the business of giving out the actual allocation based on, you know, projects that have growth management, uh, approval. So, uh, I would like our system to be a little bit simpler than that and easier to administer, but I, we are going to need to work with our attorney and make sure that it's all going to pass legal muster. Cause we don't want to repeat the, the errors of Williston's past, uh, and be in court.
Someone from your department then would sort of work with the DRB to clarify all of this and, and take, take the DRB through these steps. I would expect someone like Mitch would be, be doing that.
Yeah, I mean, there will be two steps, of course, with any zoning change, especially, especially something this significant. There would be a training sort of, you know, here's what's changed and here's how it's going to work and when it goes into effect and all of that. And that would be my role to do. But then going forward, yes, it would be Mitch's role to say, I'm, I'm here to work with applicants, explain the process and then help the DRB, uh, in that once a year meeting where they have to sit down and review the projects that they heard earlier in the year and score them.
So you just, you, you mentioned, um, needing to create the zoning language and run that by the town's attorney. But we need to, we need to vet this and hold a hearing?
Yes.
So, but how do we hold a hearing if we don't have the
I think you want to, I think you want to vet it first. And then if you're amenable to moving forward with it, it needs to, I need to re, re, write it in the form of a zoning regulation revision.
But doesn't that need another hearing?
No, 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 no. So before you go to a public hearing, you want it all written up as a formal zoning regulation revision. Right now, Dan and I don't even know if this commission thinks this is a good idea. Um, or if the, the criteria that the allocation committee came up with are the right criteria. Or if the point system is the, are, are calibrated properly. Um, so, so you have, you have a lot of thinking and discussing and, and critical thinking to do before we get to an actual zoning regulation revision language that we would go to a public hearing with.
What's your timeline on this?
So the timeline that I laid out for the select board was that, um, and, and we're behind it unfortunately. Uh, is that you would be talking about this in August, I think. Um, and depend, and in the hopes that you might feel that the allocation committee's work was good and didn't require much revision, that you might be, uh, going to a public hearing by the end of the calendar year. And then delivering it to the select board so that they could then put it aside, finish their budget process and take it up in March. Um, and, and therefore have their public hearing that they would be required to have, um, by May or June. The, the, the ultimate goal with this was to have both an ordinance revision and a zoning change effective July 1st of next year, which is when traditionally we have done the new, the new fiscal year, the new allocation numbers come out. So that, that was the goal. Because the water capacity issue is, is limiting and there's no way we're going to have a new well online by July 1st of next year. It's not clear to me that we actually need to have this all wrapped up in a pretty bow by July 1st of next year. It actually might be July 1st of 2021. Um, but that was the time horizon that I laid out to the select board.
Right. Couple contradictory thoughts. I mean, one was the, the, the later you do this, the, the more things you catch in flight, right? That, that could get upset. Um, that could be a problem. But on, on the other hand, um, shooting for a, a, a public hearing by the end of the year seems really rushed. Um, you know, if, if I'm, if I just think about what's left of the year, you know, you got October, right? We typically only have one meeting in November, one meeting in December, right? For, you know, fairly obvious reasons. Um, boy.
Tough to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going to be pushing on the, on the design standards.
When, when Maggie and I talked about our schedule for the rest of the calendar year, um, here's what we talked about. We talked about, uh, if we can get, uh, funding to do the illustrative work, the graphical work to go with the design standards, that that would likely happen in the first part of next year. And we'd be looking at a public hearing on design standards, you know, maybe in the late winter. Um, which would leave open the rest of this year to maybe get something done on this front. November is, um, the first meeting in November is really the last opportunity to have a public hearing. So if we're ready to go on this by then, great.
Need warning period.
And we need the warning period. Yeah. So we would have to have this fully put together and this, and your commission comfortable with the package. Um, by your, I'd have to look at the timing. Probably your, your second meeting in October. So that's just two meetings away.
And the, the committee that Dan was part of and you were part of spent an entire year, right? July 18th to March 19th, working on this. And then you're asking us to say, is this what we want to do? It's, it's this?
And you're in charge of your calendar and how fast you want to take it up. All I would say is, like you said, a lot of work went into this. Select board thinks it's a decent idea to do, so, you know, you can reinvent it or, or veto it.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, that's it. We're not writing it ourselves.
Right.
We're just
The other thing is that I, it, it's a lot to digest. I think maybe just as importantly, the public has not seen this at all. So th- this committee didn't do any public outreach. The select board has done no public outreach. And, and I told everyone, this is the deliberative body that will do that work. So we, we don't want to short shrift the public hearing and the, and the information we get out in, in advance of that.
This is a fairly radical change and, you know, as changes go and, you know. I think something, something, you know, more reasonable but aggressive would be probably like February.
Yeah. Well, if, if you're all in a similar mindset, Maggie and I can work on plotting out those meetings. But, but again, the point of tonight is to introduce you to it and give you an opportunity to ask questions and, and make suggestions, uh, large and small. So first, first steps.
Alex, um, assuming this, we accept this, do you see this as a way of speeding up the process of getting developments started?
No, um, no, I think that the water capacity issue that we're having is going to rule that. Um, how we dole out the allocation is important and that's why we're taking the time to do this. But, uh, ultimately it, it'll be the clock on that, how quickly we can bring a new well online. Uh, and, and as I said, we hope to know more by the end of, I hope to know more by the end of the calendar year. Um, I think the, the select board, um, understands that that will also require a bond vote from the voters. Uh, cause it will cost money to bring a new water supply online, even though the well was given to us, even though somebody else did most of the drilling, thank you to them. Um, there's still hundreds of thousands of dollars in cost to actually pipe that to the treatment house and add another treatment system within that building to deal with it. Um, so since that will be a bond vote too, uh, it's not clear what the timing will be, whether, whether that'll be ripe for town meeting or whether that will be delayed till perhaps the November of next year when we're, we're all voting for, um, in the general elections or, or beyond. And, um, yeah, so I, I've been telling folks probably a year and a half before we see water, new water capacity, and that's in a best case scenario.
I'm wondering how best to, how best to, you know, tackle our discussion of this and maybe just going one section at a time, you know, just working through the
Sure. Again, there's the scoring system, which is pretty easy to discuss. It's a discreet system. Um, and then there's the overall, like, how does this even work? Like, I understand how a project gets scored, but what's the sequence, what's the timing, all of that, so.
Who met? Who sounds like a good flow chart.
Yeah, you're right.
Who's watching everything to know that the applicant is meeting what they said they were going to meet?
Question. That came up during our committee meetings and, and the answer was, um, the, the answer was that, 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 that we would need to do that. But that the experience that they've had in Williston, um, has not, has not indicated that they've run into problems on that front. So clearly there needs to be some codified system for clawing back that allocation or, uh, somehow requiring those things to happen. Um, but they've been doing this for a decade and, and that's not been an issue for them. Their, their developers understand what the system is and the expectations and, and generally meet them.
I mean, we've had some contrary results, you know, on other zoning issues in town. So I can understand the comment and.
I'm not saying it shouldn't be addressed, but that was, that was the discussion we had at the committee level was, uh, that
Experience is with Williston at least.
Then it hasn't been an issue.
Things have gone along and, and nobody's tried to do something under the table.
They have not had to take developers to court, uh, to, you know, enforce affordable housing that they promised they would do. Um, or some other, um, positive thing that, you know, allowed them to score well.
What's, um, what's Mitch's feedback on this? Has, has he like, I, it, it would be interesting for him to, you know, like take us through.
Yeah, I, I think Mitch is going to be hearing this probably for the first time, just as you are. I don't think Mitch is, I have not involved Mitch much in this, in this process to date, nor the DRB. Uh, and frankly, I didn't want to because I, this is a radical departure and it wasn't clear to me that the select board or your commission was even going to be interested in pursuing it. Um, so if you are, um, I think that can be part of the public outreach is internal outreach to, um, you know, our development review coordinator who's got to help administer it and the board.
Especially the logistics part of it.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Yeah, Mitch, I, Mitch, I'm sure would be happy to come to one of these meetings and sound off and.
I think we talked about this, but if we were to have this system in place in the past with projects that have gone through, we had talked about like how many projects in a year would be presented. And I don't think it was a lot per year, was it?
Not at all. And in fact, that's, that's the one piece that worries me about this. Um, there are a couple of pieces, but the part we haven't talked a lot about is this whole system is premised on competition. Good old American free market competition. And the idea is that, that, um, projects will compete for a limited allocation. Um, and, and they will want to score high in order to get that allocation. But Heinsberg is not South Burlington, Burlington, it's not Williston. And our, we don't see projects, we don't see a lot of projects all at the same time. Sometimes they happen to, you know, come around the same time out of coincidence, but, so. My concern is that we might, you know, if we implemented this, we might see several years in which there's only one project seeking allocation and they're going to get it because they're the only one there. And so part of that conversation, which I know Dan had some opinions on, was do we set a floor? You know, a minimum number of points that a project has to reach to get any allocation at all. And even if there wasn't any other competition, if they didn't meet that, they just didn't get it. They got to go redesign the project.
They're all getting the zeros for, you know.
Right. So that's built, that's baked into the scoring system. It's a pretty low bar, um, but, uh, 10 and 20, I think. Um, but, but like Dan said, we ran several previous projects through the scoring system, um, like Green Street, like Thistle Hill, um, to see how they would score and see whether it would be possible and tried to calibrate the numbers there. Um, but it is, it is a good point that, um, that's, that's baked into the system. And, you know, if there's not a lot of competition, we, you know, it, it'll be interesting.
Well, I'm, I'm glad to see an alternative to first come, first served.
Yes.
Uh, which I don't think serves anyone.
A question for Dan. When your committee was doing research, according to Alex, Williston is the only other town in Vermont doing this. Are there other states that you may have looked at that have similar systems?
Yeah, we, um, contacted towns, um, and cities in New England. Um, I covered some in New Hampshire. Uh, I think we looked in New York and Massachusetts. And then, uh, we also looked nation, nationwide as well, um, to see what other towns and cities were doing. And really, for the most part, it was first, on some sort of first come, first served basis. With that said, a lot of the towns that we had talked to are, out of all of them, I don't think anybody talked about the same challenges with their water and wastewater that we're running into. So there was that little bit of a difference there. Um, is that?
Yeah, that's right, right on, right on the money. The, the, and that's what I found most interesting was that, and, um, the committee actually divvied up towns. We, we, especially in Vermont, we got a list from the state of all the permitted systems and people just took it like a county and everybody made phone calls. It took, it took a lot of meetings just to get that information back. But what, what shocked me about that is that most of these, uh, systems, um, had no capacity issues. So when we asked them, are you limited? And they're like, no, no, we have, we have plenty. Uh, so yeah, it felt like Heinsberg was in a, an interesting position that way, given our, our very small slice of capacity that, that exists.
I find that so hard to believe.
You know what you might find even harder to believe? The fact that when I talked to the person at the state, they were just, uh, very happy that we were doing, you know, we were so cognizant of our capacity and managing it. Uh, and he said, I hate to tell you, but there are some towns that don't even know how much they have left. You know, they just, they just treat it like a limitless resource and, um, and, and they're not even keeping track. Uh, which again, hard to believe, but that's what I heard from the state regulator who, you know, deals with the permitting for all these systems. I, I think it would be fair to say that our nationwide search was limited. Um, Jeff French, I think, did most of that searching. It was internet based. Um, it wasn't like he was calling every city in the country. Uh, so, so I'm, I, I'm not sure there are communities out there that are doing more innovative allocation systems, but Jeff didn't come upon any, um, in the internet work that he did.
It was hard to find the details that we were looking for online.
Yeah.
Uh, it was, it was challenging. I mean, I, we really just ended up calling and, you know, trying to talk with somebody.
Yeah. Yeah. We had like a 10 or 12 question list that each person was calling and asking the same questions to those communities. And even then it was tough to get, it was almost impossible to get rate information. And that's why Lenora ended up having to do it, uh, because there was just too many variables there.
Was it, was it difficult coming up with the, this, what is it, six?
Yes.
Categories?
Yes, the committee went through a lot of, uh, brainstorming on, um, what, where in the town plan do we talk about our values? And, and, and how does that relate to possible categories? And I think we had larger lists that got winnowed down and this, these turned into the core ones. Um, because Dan and others were there, we, we did Because Dan and others were there, we, we did, we did look at the zoning regulations and, and talk about what's there that doesn't need to be in the allocation scoring system. You know, so there was some winnowing that dealt with that. And I think the comment that Rolf made that I guess you didn't get by email had to do with that. One of Rolf's comments before the meeting was, I don't see any design standard criteria in there and I think that would be good to add those. And we shied, the committee shied away from that in part because I told them that the planning commission was doing that as a separate project, that we were working on design standards and that the zoning was gonna sort of take care of that. We didn't necessarily need to have it in the, the scoring system for water and wastewater allocation.
No, I agree on that one. All right, so we come up with a plan for, for approaching this, for scheduling?
You and I can talk about that. I think Joe's and John's wisdom on that is sage, not being overly optimistic. But I guess I would, I would ask everybody to just stew on this and, and maybe come to the next meeting when this is on the agenda with your questions or your suggestions on how to, how to fix it or make it better. And I don't know what you think, Maggie. I'd just like to hear that so that I know whether I'm just drafting something that looks a lot like what the allocation committee recommended or I'm gonna rework it in substantial ways based on your feedback. I think we talked about possibly discussing this at the next meeting or possibly, that's supposed, we're supposed to be focusing on design standards then. So possibly hopscotching to the, the second meeting in October.
I think it's gonna be hard to approach this in small.
You need a significant chunk of time.
But yeah, I mean, we could carve out 15 minutes or 10 minutes.
Well, remember.
Make a decision for the rest of our lives.
You have limited time in these meetings to get your questions answered. So if, maybe on the questions front, you can ask those questions of Dan and I outside of the meeting and, and maybe focus on the, for the next meeting on your suggestions. You know, I don't like this, or I think this oughta change, or I love this, keep it exactly the way it is, those sorts of things. But if you have questions, maybe ping Dan and I, you know, outside of the meeting and we can, we can fill you in as best we can.
Were there minutes of the allocation committee?
Yes. They, I believe, are on the website. Let me double check.
I'm, I'm not promising to read them.
You are welcome to.
For a riveting.
Someone wrote them with the intent that they could be read. Yes, so there is a page for the water wastewater allocation committee on the website.
And that's got their minute.
I'm just verifying, the, the web is slow. Yes, meeting minutes are there.
All right. Okay, so we have guests, welcome. So it's, we're moving on to agenda item four, which is revisions to the contractors yard regulations. And Alex, maybe you can talk about the town plan.
Sure.
The item, and then we'll discuss forming a committee to.
Sure. So as I explained in the email with your packet, we've had an action item in the town plan for some time. It's action item 4.3.5. Peter Urb, our former zoning administrator, was pretty instrumental in getting the planning commission to add this as an action item to the town plan. Because as zoning administrator, he would frequently hear from folks either trying to relocate a contractor's yard or start up a new one. And it was very difficult to do because of the way the regulations are currently set up, particularly the required setback distances from the operation to property lines and to surrounding homes. So it's been in the town plan for some time. We haven't done much with it yet. And it's in the town plan and our chart as a medium term issue and one that we should address, you know, within three to five years. We're, we're basically in that time horizon. So I think it's time that we do that to clarify what is a contractor's yard. So Heinsberg has very comprehensive allowances for home occupations. And one of our special types of home occupations is, is contractor's yards and vehicle repair services. And so we have several in town of both types. Folks who repair cars and do work out of their homes and also folks who do, who run excavation businesses and landscaping businesses that, that qualifies as a contractor's yard. And they do that out of their home and on their property. So a contractor's yard is essentially a business that has heavy equipment and does work offsite. And it's, it's, probably most of you have an idea of what, what that would be. Someone who might have a dump truck, an excavator, you know, a couple of trailers to bring equipment. And they maybe dig foundations. And so they bring that equipment to a customer site, do the work and then either move on to another customer or bring it back to their site. And that includes landscaping businesses as well. In our regs, there is a definition that, that is tied to the, the weight of the vehicles and how many vehicles they are. So that's what a contractor's yard is. It is in our regs as a home occupation, so you have to live on the property in order to have that. It's not an allowance for there to be a commercial excavating company, you know, anywhere in town. Those are allowed in specific zoning districts, but not throughout most of the rural parts of residential parts of town. So that's what a contractor's yard is. That's what some of the problems that folks have experienced with the current regulations, making it difficult to find a suitable spot for them. And because we seem to be constantly embroiled in what feel like very big zoning changes, whether it's village growth zoning or rural area zoning or village design standards or now this water wastewater allocation, we seem to be having a hard time getting back to smaller, discrete zoning issues, and this is one of them. So Maggie and I talked and thought it might make sense to talk about whether, to, to form a subcommittee, to have three planning commissioners, you know, take, take this on and look at it and come back to the full commission with some recommendations. This has happened in the past, not with contractor's yards, but with specific requests for zoning changes. I think Rob and Ann Frost, some years ago, came to the commission and said, we'd like a zoning change down by the Hollow Road adjacent to the Industrial One District and related to the general store that they operated. And at that time, the commission had three members that sort of looked into it, did some research and then came back and made some recommendations to the full commission. So it's not uncharted water and might be a way to actually get some movement on this without having the full commission have to talk about it, meeting after meeting after meeting.
Right, and having to schedule it. So, and Maria, Maria talked about this last meeting or meeting before, just about, you know, we don't respond, we can't respond quickly to, to problem issues. And so this is sort of a way to, to fast track it. You know, if a small group works on, you know, some language and then brings it back to the, to the group, then maybe we can make.
That's the idea.
Are there some particular problems associated with these two uses, auto repair, contractor's yards? Are we hearing about and finding that there are problems? You were saying finding locations for such an operation is one of them?
Yeah, so as I indicated, when Peter was here as zoning commissioner, which was five years ago now, I think he's, I think he worked with at least two different landowners. I think one who had, I think there was a divorce in the family and he had to relocate to a different property, had a contractor's yard at the prior property and was looking for another place to keep the business running and really had a hard time finding a place that would meet the, the regulate, the, the regulations with regard to the setback distances. So, so, and that wasn't the only case. So yeah, it's principally a question of, these setback distances are, are so large that you have to have an exceedingly large property for a contractor's yard or, or a vehicle. To fit. And you have to be kind of away from your neighbors to a large degree. And I think, you know, I, I wasn't here when these regulations went into effect. But I can understand, you know, some of the rationale. You know, there tends to be a bit more noise with these kind of operations, exhaust from diesel equipment. I would assume that these setback distances were set to sort of buffer neighbors from, from that. But they are really large and these are, these are not the same as, I don't wanna disparage any businesses in Heinsberg, so I'm trying to think of a business outside of Heinsberg that I can. Disparage, right. It's not like a knitting business or a yarn business out of the home, which, which are great for the person who's running the business, but.
It's somewhat external in that.
That, but also from a value statement, these businesses are critical to make a rural community work. Like, we need contractor's yards in our community to, to do the work that they do. Oftentimes, they do that work for the town. When, when our highway crew can't, you know, keep up after a storm. So in rural Vermont, these, these businesses are, are critical. It's kind of like slaughterhouses in the ag industry. These are businesses that help make the rest of the rural economy work. Not that yarn businesses aren't important, but I was just trying to give you an example of like one home-based business that, you know, if it didn't exist, it would, you know, the town would function. We would not function without these contractor's yards. So in any case, given their importance, it seems like it, it makes sense to revisit those setback requirements to make it easier for them to locate and while still respecting neighbors and, you know, not creating a neighbor, neighbor conflict.
Well, we have some guests who can talk about the difficulties that are. So, and, and maybe you guys could introduce yourselves?
I'm Arnold Hayden.
I'm Chad Hayden. Actually, I'll put a few of you on that side.
Mosno Whitetail Landscaping.
I've got a couple things to say. So my name is John Muzuki. I'm here for Chad, although I myself live in Heinsberg, just moved to town a couple months ago. I'm over on Baldwin Road, so I'll have to get to know more of you some more over time. But yeah, we came primarily just to sort of, to listen and keep track of the development of, of this issue. But I think, given the way the discussion was just progressing, it may be useful to sort of talk a little bit about Chad's situation 'cause I think he's a very good example of the difficulties posed by some of these dimensional requirements of, of a contractor's yard. So Chad is over on, well, you know roughly where the place is. It's over on North Road, just on the corner of North and.
Hayden Hill.
Hayden Hill appropriately, okay. So, let's see, he's got like a three acre parcel, maybe just shy of a three acre parcel. He's been operating that, that business for about seven years now. And in terms of, you know, disrupting neighbors or things like that, he's never had any, any concerns from any of the neighbors about noise or, or, you know, dust or any other issues coming up there. And if you look at some of these, some of these dimensional requirements, he's basically, he went to put up a sign in front of the, the business or something like that and then found out in getting a permit for the sign that he actually needs, he needs a permit to operate a contractor yard there and actually can't meet any of these requirements. So let's see. The requirements in the regulation as it currently stands about the contractor yard require you to have 600 feet from basically any neighbor's house. So that's, that's the big one that you had talked about just a minute ago. And this is not maybe the best map or anything like that.
They can bring up Google's maps.
That would, that would be fine too. So this is me very, sort of half haterly going on Google, Google Maps. I know allowing you to measure distance, which I, I didn't know about, but that's Chad's property. I don't know if you can see, but these are all of the houses in the surrounding area. Everyone that I've drawn a red X over is within 600 feet of Chad's property. So basically it's.
He'd have to own 10 of the houses around him to meet your requirements. And I'm not a math whiz, but the nearest that I could come up with is his house would have to sit inside of 40 acres to meet your requirements.
Again, I guess it depends on where people move, you know, place their houses, but probably practically speaking that.
I'm not saying that he would have to own it, but the houses, he'd have to have 40 acres around him.
Yeah, and there is, there is a separation distance, not only from the operation to surrounding homes, but to the property line, which is, Arnold's right. It makes, it makes it a, a large lot and a lot that's distant from neighbors and, you know, and without neighbors on the edge of, of the lot, so it's tough.
On that point too, the, the regs right now say, you know, you have to have at least three acres and then you have to meet all of these dimensional requirements. So one of the dimensional requirements is that you're 200 feet from any lot line. I was sort of doodling this out and doing the math partially just for my own curiosity earlier today. The smallest possible lot that you could have to meet that requirement would be a 400 by 400 square. So you're right in the middle of your 200 feet from any lot line, right? A 400 by 400 square is necessarily at least like 3.7 acres. So it's not possible to have a three acre lot that meets these requirements. Yeah, I think that's, I think that's basically wrong and short of it. So actually, one thing that Chad mentioned to me is that he happens to know a number of other individuals who are operating contractor's yards in the area. Some of them, I think, are grandfathered, even though their lots are, are noncompliant with the, the way that the regs are written right now. But in terms of, one idea that came to mind is if there is a subcommittee that's formed, I think Chad and some of the other people in the area would be very willing to basically get together, work with that subcommittee and try to figure out what sort of distances might make sense. I know you'll need to talk to other people as well to figure out, you know, the neighbors' concerns and things like that and measuring what, what's gonna avoid the creation of a nuisance. But in terms of figuring out what would be necessary to actually allow these businesses to continue to operate, that might be a worthwhile.
Right, yeah, and as, as Chad and Arnold pointed out to me earlier, that there are, there are rural areas where there is enough, you know, enough land surrounding. The problem is that though, many of those places are on, you know, class three or four roads and.
So does that mean that you guys are gonna fight with Mike Anthony when he posts Hayden Hill Road and not let us go up and down it for three months during mud season?
Yeah, it's a very good point, 'cause once the roads are posted, that heavy equipment is. You can't really, you can't really move it along the roads without that exception.
I mean, Mike is real good now, 'cause we're on Blacktop. We can go down, we'll talk to him, he says, you can, you can go out, come in at night, no problem. Put us up there, not happening. So our stuff is parked from the end of February till a lot of times May 15th. How do we make a living on?
Well, I think the other good point is that, as Maggie mentioned, there are several what are called grandfathered contractor yards in town. If you look in the regulations, it, it's got a whole litany of information about, you know, what the regulations are and what grandfathered yards have to meet. But those are yards that likely don't meet these requirements either. That's why they were grandfathered. And if those yards have been in existence for as long as they have, then without substantial neighbor complaints or issues, why aren't the, why aren't the distance, separation distances that it currently exists for them suitable for new yards in new locations? Like, why do we have to have a grandfathered category? Why, why can't we have a set of regulations that actually works for all the yards? If in fact neighbors are not losing their minds and, you know, the neighborhoods aren't all going downhill, which I don't wanna completely predetermine how this conversation goes. I haven't talked to neighbors at any of these places. Maybe there are issues. But I think it's accurate to say that our office has received zero complaints about whitetail landscaping. So, and that's not, and that's an unpermitted contractor's yard at this point, not one of these grandfathered ones, so.
And I, and I, I agree. I think it would be very helpful for the committee to bring in, you know, other contract, you know, folks with contractor's yards to get some, get some input on, you know.
Can we get Google Maps up or Google Earth?
Yes.
Because we'll, if you would, we'll show you guys on screen how far 650 feet is from my house that doesn't meet these. that doesn't meet these requirements.
Yeah, I can actually just put a circle on the map here. Um, this is not Google Earth, but this is, um, the mapping software we use.
Why don't you orient? So that's North Road going north and south.
Yeah, why don't I hit the lights actually, uh, because it's a little hard to see with all this light in the room? Sorry, Emilio. Focus on the screen. Um, alright, so to orient everyone, uh, if you can see the cursor here, this is the North Road. This is Hayden Hill Road. This is Buck Hill Road East. There's the mobile home, uh, Mountain View Mobile Home Park. And this is the Hayden, uh, this is Chad's property here, Chad and Arnold's property here. And so there's a house right on the corner. And you can see behind the house is where some of Chad's, um, operations are. So that's the, that's the layout.
So if you put a dot on my house-
Yeah, let me put a dot on, on your house and then we'll just sweep it out six hundred feet.
Yeah.
And let me just change the color so you can see through it.
There's the forty acres.
Yeah, right.
That's what we're saying.
Right.
That's a big parcel for anybody that wants to run a business to try meeting.
And if you have to go and buy a parcel,
Yeah.
I mean, a, a normal three-acre building lot now is what, a hundred grand? So now you buy a forty-acre parcel that's commercial, plus you can put a house on, you're talking a half a million dollars.
Yeah.
I mean, that seems pretty drastic there to me.
I mean, yeah, how many, in the rural areas, how many, um, how many plots of land can we identify that are on a paved road? Uh, and not, you know, not within spitting, you know, distance of of other homes?
I guess I'm not following what you're asking.
She's asking me if you can afford it.
How available is, is such a, such a lot?
Even if you could buy it.
Where's, where is that land?
Where's that? Where do you find that?
Right, right.
So, um-
Yeah, I mean, I'm on the roads every day for what I do for work and you see Realtor signs, three acres, four acres. Where do you start?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we already have, um, uh, Marie who's, who's talked about this issue, um, is interested in, in being on us, on the smaller committee. And I guess we're thinking three?
That seems like a nimble number. I don't think there's, uh, too much magic to it, but, uh, it's small enough so that it's not a quorum, meaning you don't need to worry about warning meetings and taking minutes. You can work offline and then report back.
And I would very much like to, um, like to be on that committee and so I guess first of all, are people in favor of forming a subcommittee as a way to, to fast-track this and bring some information back to them? PC?
And it makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Definitely. Needs to be addressed.
Yeah.
That's a good way to do it.
So, anyone else interested in, in joining our committee?
I'd be interested in joining.
Yep.
That would be, that would be three. You, Marie and Maggie.
Okay. Alright. Well, do we need a motion? We just-
No, no, I think the conversation recorded in the minutes. Thank you, Kate. And V-Cam, thank you, Emilio. Um, it's fine. Uh, and just know that, uh, you know, I'll, I'll be here to help you with that.
Okay.
So it's not, I mean, you can do it completely on your own, but I'm, I'm also here to help you with that.
Okay. Okay.
Especially in terms of, you know, maybe sending mailings out to other contractor's yard owners or neighbors or, or what have you.
Yeah.
Um, I think what happened the last time, not the last time, but the time we did this, um, with regard to the frosts and their requests for rezoning on the south side of town, um, the, the, the smaller committee did a bunch of work, came back with a, um, with some ideas and a recommendation. But I think maybe at that planning commission meeting, we invited a bunch of parties to come and be a part of that sort of final conversation about whether to move this forward. Um, you don't have to do that model. You could do it out, you know, meet with folks outside of that. But at some point, it's just got to come back to the full commission-
Right.
So that we're on the record and, you know, whatever recommendations are put forward in a public forum.
And wouldn't result in a change to the zoning regulations.
Yep. If, if it's approved, approved by the commission, what should we be talking about in terms of timeline for this?
Uh, I mean, the whole point of this is to be able to do it with, uh, some, you know, be nimble about it and do it quickly.
Right.
Uh, I think it's, the timing is really up to the three of you and your availability, so, um, why don't, why don't you and I, Maggie, talk about, again, the planning commission's schedule through and into twenty twenty?
Okay.
And, and we can see where this might logically fit in to a, to coming back to the full commission? And then if that, that might give you a target to work toward.
Right, and then we'd still need to do here if we decide to do-
Yeah, I think it's important to remember that, that this is gonna, you know, make this conversation happen faster, but the, um, the, the statutory process to update zonings would still have to be followed, even if the full commission, let's say, you know, a month and a half from now says, "Here's the proposal. We think that's a good idea." We would still need to warn a formal public hearing, hold that, and then forward the proposal to the select board. They would have to review it, warn a public hearing, and then adopt it. And so that's a process that takes time.
Yeah.
So the faster you can work through your initial thinking, the more, you know, sooner we can get through that, but-
Okay.
I don't want anybody, especially you guys, to misunderstand how long the process could take. And it, it, best case scenario, um, late spring, uh, before the select board can take any action.
In the meantime, they're not restricted in operating their business. Is that correct? They're not-
Well, I didn't really want to go there, but, um, yes, in a way. So, so unfortunately, it's not a permitted, uh, use. Um, so our zoning administrator is issuing a formal notice of violation for that. Um, I'm gonna, I've told Chad that I'm gonna go in front of the select board and say, "I think you need to cut these guys some slack," um, and delay any, any enforcement of that, you know, for a year. Uh, a- at least to give this process, uh, some time to go through, but, um-
I think part of that argument is that, is that the planning commission is, is contemplating action right now. Right? Yeah, we're gonna deal with this.
Yeah.
Now.
Yeah, and, and I think it's, it's important to note for the record that this is an action item that has been in the town plan for many years, not just this current version that was adopted in twenty seventeen, but the version prior to that. And your interest in working on this, um, is believed by a specific situation that's happening, but is, that is not the reason why you are working on this. Um, you're working on this because it's been something that we were supposed to be working on. We just haven't had the time to do. Uh, and it relates to a, a type of business in town that both can be problematic potentially with regard to neighbors, but also is extremely important to the community.
Right.
Good. Well, we have our marching orders.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments?
Um, I guess the, the question that I would have is, you guys are talking strictly setbacks. How far are you gonna be? What other things that's in violation are you guys going to address?
I think that's for the subcommittee to, to really come up with suggestions on a new-
I mean, we're hearing, you know, you can only have three pieces of equipment. I'm just throwing this out.
Right.
You can only have three pieces of equipment, or you can only have two trucks. I mean, is that something that you guys are going to address also as your subcommittee?
You mean as the definition of
The contractor's yard.
I guess we could. It's the, it's the setbacks that have been the biggest problem to-
I would, I would encourage a soup-to-nuts look at that. It's not a long section of the regs and the lot size issue is also a, a, an issue that's been problematic. So lot size, setbacks. And frankly, th- the number of vehicles, to clarify what Arnold's saying, there isn't a limit on the number of vehicles, but there is a definition that says, "Once you're over a certain number, then you're in the contractor's yard category." I would encourage the committee to think about whether that's the right number. And whether we want to sweep as many of these into the regulatory process as we currently do, um, o- or whether we want to set that exemption number at a different level. You know, perhaps it's not the way we currently have, have it defined. Perhaps, uh, it's a different criteria that, that puts you into a contractor's yard versus just a traditional home, home occupation, which you still need a permit for, but you don't have to meet these special criteria regarding setbacks to neighbors and other homes.
What about hours of operation?
Yeah, I'm not sure that we, I'm not sure that, uh, what specificity there is in the section on that, but I, I would encourage the committee to just look at the full, it's in there. Yeah.
Yeah.
I would encourage the committee to look at that whole section of the regs.
That was one question that I was gonna have for you guys. Because the setbacks is just a part of the section five point three. You know, are there any other uh, areas of this section that, you know, have an impact to your business? As much as, I mean, clearly, six hundred feet is like the major one, but you know, in the rest of these, like with those definitions of how many trucks or, you know, there's a lot of-
The tonnage is the thing that comes up to us on the trucks.
That's what trips it in, in their case.
I mean, how much is only what, three ton?
I think that's what, what it says is, well, we could read it.
We haul, we don't have a truck that don't haul three tons. A one-ton hog's more than three ton. A one-ton dump.
Yeah, so I, it, that's, that's more of an issue of whether you trip into the contractor's yard than, than a limit for contractor's yard. So if a contractor's yard is properly permitted and meets all the other requirements, they could have twenty pieces of equipment. And there's no upper limit on that. It, it, it's a matter of when do you trip into that contractor's yard provision? But I think in, in, um, Chad and Arnold's case, the lot size is, in this particular case, is an issue. It, it, it's a, a lot that's under three acres and the minimum lot size is three acres, so that's an issue as well.
Yeah, I guess that would be, uh, good to hear.
Chad's law is three acres are supposed to be. It was just surveyed too, so.
Well, maybe that isn't an issue then, but, but that's, that's, I think, worth looking at. Clearly, I mean, without going down into the weeds of this, clearly, we don't want contractor's yards on, uh, quarter-acre lots, um, you know, in the middle of a residential neighborhood of similar quarter-acre lots. It's probably not a good idea. Um, but is three acres the right number? Are the setbacks the right number?
That's what we need to-
Yeah. Alright, we're gonna talk about it all.
Good.
So.
That was good.
Great. Well, thank you so much for, for coming up.
Anything?
Thank you.
Anything else?
Good.
Everything sounds good.
We're all covered.
Good. You know where to find me, Maggie.
I have a pretty good idea.
Bottom of the road.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Thanks for coming in, guys.
Thanks.
And believe it or not, we are still, well, alright, no we're not, but that's okay. Okay. Um, okay. Great. So maybe I'll, I'll be in touch with Dan and Marie and, um, and, uh, let's move on to number five, which is the municipal planning grant endorsement.
Right, so last time, this should be brief. Last time, we talked about two project ideas, uh, to apply for this grant. And, uh, one was to, uh, hire someone to help us with illustrations to make these design standards more understandable. The ones that you, architecture and building, uh, sorry, architecture and streetscape design standards. And the other was to hire, um, uh, an economic analyst, uh, to, to help us crunch our sort of capital infrastructure finances and, and revenue streams going forward. I presented these to the, you, the planning commission favored the fiscal analysis idea, but I think you were supportive of both. Uh, I presented to the select board and they unanimously said the design standards won. They thought that was a much more contained project, would be possible given the cost parameters of the grant. Um, and, uh, felt like they were gonna be doing some of that fiscal analysis work with, uh, the consultant that they, they're working with on the wastewater upgrade. Um, I think they felt that was important, but they were afraid that it was going to, based on the estimates that I got, uh, because I did get some more after the meeting, uh, your last meeting, that it was likely to be more than the grant would allow. Um, so they've already made that decision, that that's the grant we're going for, and I just need you guys, I need you, Maggie, as the chair, to sign the application form saying that the planning commission endorses that.
Okay. Alright, and you need a motion for this?
Probably would be hel- uh, good to just have a motion since the last time you were, you know, recommending the other project.
Okay, twenty copex, or actually a peach to somebody who would be willing to make a motion. To what?
I made a motion that we pursue the
Endorse the-
Design, uh, illustrations consultant.
For the municipal planning grant.
To apply for that, for the municipal planning grant.
Awesome. Second?
Nelson.
Okey-dokey. Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against?
Great.
What?
Don't, don't run away. I gotta run upstairs and get the form for you to sign.
Okay, alright, okay. Okay. Um, well, Zawa, that was quick. Um, okay, minutes of the September eleventh meeting?
Well, I thank Kate for quoting me correctly, because whoever wrote it in the citizen totally didn't get what I said.
Uh-oh.
Yeah.
We happen to have a member of the press here. Was that you, Scooter?
Must be it.
Okay, you got, you guys can duke it out afterwards. You can duke it out afterwards. Okay. Um, any, any additions, changes, comments?
Fine to me.
Alright. And a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright then. Um, we're just zipping along here, people. Um, what have we for other business?
There was a question at the last meeting about what's the status of the official map? And we didn't really get a complete answer on.
Yeah, I think my answer was the, the select board had it on the schedule for, um, a September eighteenth meeting and it looked like it was getting bumped, and it did.
You said that you sent it on-
So, last I heard from my boss, it, it's on for their, their first meeting in October. Um, but that's subject to change. So, if you're interested in attending that select board discussion, which will be the substantive discussion about your proposal, um, you know, let me know and I, I'll, I'll keep you in the loop when I know when the select board's agenda has been finalized.
Yeah, I think a email to everyone. W- when do they, when does, when do they usually finalize it?
Um, it's usually the week before. And their first meeting in October is
Seventh.
Is different from their normal, uh, schedule, so it's, it's the-
Monday the seventh.
Monday the seventh, yeah. So I think I'll know the week prior to that. And I'm, yeah, I'd be happy to send an email out.
Tell everybody.
Yep.
It's, yeah, uh, we're not always getting the, um, the agenda on Front Porch Forum. In fact, we're usually not.
Or online. Yeah, and I think, to be perfectly honest, Renee has been doing the best she can, but the select board itself has been doing a little shifting of when they're available and when they're scheduling meetings and, uh, anyways.
Okay.
So you were saying if they don't do what by a certain time, then
Right, so-
process starts over again?
Yeah, so the, your proposal will be considered denied, uh, if they don't take action, uh, within a year of your public hearing. Your public hearing was in February, so they've gotta do something with the proposal by then.
Which would mean having a public hearing or?
Yes, they, they need to have a public hearing.
Within that year?
With, yes, and, and adopt it, I believe, yes, within that year. So they've gotta, they've gotta become comfortable with the proposal, make any revisions, and then hold a public hearing.
And we're getting into budget season.
And we are in the budget season, yes.
And if they don't act, that's considered a denial.
Yes. Not to say you couldn't restart the process, but that would be unfortunate. So, I think they have full intention of giving it its due. It's just taking longer because of a variety of other business they have in front of them.
Yeah. Yeah, I, when you find out, I think an email to everyone-
Will do.
Plus, you know, threats of blackmail, maybe, I don't know.
The only other announcement I had was, the reason I'm wearing this silly thing is, um, I was in DC, uh, for the last few days for a planning conference. It's the American Planning Association's, um, annual policy and advocacy conference. Uh, so they had a bunch of us down there to learn about, um, federal, uh, funding of various important planning- So they had a bunch of us down there to learn about federal funding of various important planning programs, like the Community Development Block Grant Program and Surface Transportation Funding and so on and so forth. And then actually, they scheduled meetings with our DC delegations and, and we got to go meet with staffers of those folks, which meant meeting with Leahy and Sanders and Welch's staff people, not them themselves, of course, they have something rather bigger to deal with as of yesterday. But, so that was, those were productive meetings this morning and all those staffers are very friendly and our delegation is very pro-planning, very pro-funding of good planning, so it's, they are easy conversations to have. But I did bring to them the specific example of our wastewater facility upgrade and how the cost is, is problematic and so they're all contacting their associates in the right areas to get back to me with, if, if we have not turned over a stone that maybe we could have turned over. Renee is pretty sure that we have turned over every funding stone there is, but never hurts to ask, so. Anyways, that's where I was advocating for good planning down in DC.
Awesome, thank you. All right. Goodness, really? Eight minutes early?
Can I ask a question about the, the other towns here on the? What would, you know, I'm just checking out Middlebury. What would make their water and sewer fees so?
So much lower?
Yes.
It's a good question, I'm not sure, I don't remember the data point there in terms of how many users they have. I, the mantra I like to say is, the more users you have, the more you can spread the cost, the lower the, the per unit costs are. I don't actually know in the Middlebury case. I am pretty confident that Middlebury College is a huge skewing factor in that community in a whole bunch of ways fiscally, so I wouldn't be surprised if that was part of the, part of the equation.
I was gonna say the college.
Yeah, yeah.
I grew up in the Middlebury area and, yeah, the college helps with the town quite a bit, which is, you know, good and I don't know for sure, but that was just my initial reaction.
I guess, you know, this new development cost for a manufacturing business, you know, why would anybody have a manufacturing business in Heinsburg?
Given that cost differential, given that it's like, what is it, six times?
Sixty-five thousand dollars cheaper to go to Middlebury.
Yeah, that's a good question. I, I do, it is important to note that, that those are one-time costs, so while the differential is large, I, I do think that businesses make decisions not just based on, on those upfront costs, especially when, let's say, the cost to build a new facility is in the millions and this is a thirty thousand dollar differential, it, it may not be as big a factor as, as we might think for the, the scale of businesses that we think of, you know, contractor's yards, yarn shops, whatever. But certainly the user fees are going forward forever cost and the, some of the estimates for what those user fees would look like i, if we do the wastewater upgrade with the current funding that we think we can leverage, you know, that could potentially double. Just, just the wastewater, yeah, and that's, that's huge.
Yeah, for not a lot of rape pairs.
Right. Which is why I was making the case in Washington DC earlier today, not too much danger, but, yeah.
All right, does anyone else have anything? Okay, people, that's it, the meeting is closed.